Chair Elmore? Chair Elmore.
Hello, everybody. Go ahead and call the February 23rd, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Klauschermeyer, will you lead us?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Staff, roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
Great. Public comment, this is the time we open up the public comment for non-agenda items that are generally in the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. We'll move on. Requests for continuances, staff?
Chair Elmore, there are no requests for continuances.
Okay, so consent items. Item number one, meeting minutes of January 19th, 2023. Do we have a motion and/or a second?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with Mr. Mosher's edits.
Great. Second. Okay, let's call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Public hearing items. Item number two, this is the Thomas Residence. Site location, 700 West Oceanfront. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, good evening, Chair Elmore and to the Planning Commission. My name is David Lee with the Planning Division. This is a coastal development permit and variance for a demolition of an existing residence and construction of a new single-family residence. Project's located at 700 West Oceanfront. It's zoned as R1 and it's located in an R1 zone in the surrounding neighborhood. This is an image of the property. As you can see, there's no garage. This is the only access from Seventh Street. There's no alley access. And there's no garage parking for the property. The project request is one coastal development permit to demolish the existing single-family residence with no parking and to construct a new single-family residence in the coastal zone with compliant parking. Also, a variance is requested. First is to encroach the project six feet into the 10-foot rear setback. Second, to encroach this six feet into the 15-foot third-floor stepback. And third, to increase the floor area by 152 square feet to 3,280 square feet. This is just a quick rendering of the project. As you can see, it's on the boardwalk on the corner. This is the proposed project's development features. It complies with all development standards except for those in red. So the rear setback is requesting a variance, the square footage, and also the third-floor stepbacks. But it does comply with height, the other setbacks, and parking. So a variance is requested. I've discussed what's being requested and those are some of the findings that are required to make of, to approve a variance in Title 20. This lot, this is the original lot orientation of subdivision from 1904. With this orientation, they abutted the alley, so there was a five-foot rear setback. However, the lot was reoriented to face the oceanfront. And that's what it looks like today. As you can see, it's oriented to face the oceanfront. And what that's done is it defaults to a 10-foot rear setback by the zoning code. So there is a 10-foot setback and the applicant is requesting to encroach six feet into that 10-foot rear setback. Just a quick comparison of the FAR floor area ratio in the neighborhood. As you can see, the range is from 1.2 to 1.4. The existing is 1.16 for the project. And with the project, the request for more floor area, it goes to 1.22. So it's within the range of the surrounding FAR. There's multiple residences that are also been reoriented and these, they've been granted either variance or other deviations to encroach into the rear setback. Some photos to show the other properties that are within the block, their other three-story residences that are similar. And the top-left picture is the photo of the house next door. You can see it's a three-story structure. The project does provide adequate separation between structures. The front entrance is on Seventh Street, so the rear setback really practically acts as a side yard. And there, there's a seven-foot separation where the variance is requested and it's adequate for enough light and air. Just for comparison, on the side yard setback there, there's also a seven-foot separation, which is typical between structures. This is the third-floor stepback, stepback line. So the project is encroaching six feet in that red box into the stepback. With that, there's still a 19-foot distance from the third floor to the property line, which is, again, adequate separation between the third floor and the neighboring property. The CDP is also required for the demolition of the project, including the variance. Here's some maps from the coastal land use plan. There's, on the left, is the coastal views. There's no viewpoints nearby. And Seventh Street on the right is designated as access point, the street end is the access point as well as the boardwalk. So this is the view from, of Seventh Street. And as you can see, the residence on the, on the right will be a new house. However, it doesn't encroach into the setback abutting Seventh Street. And this is the view from the boardwalk. Again, there's no encroachment on these setbacks. It's the setback that's in the rear abutting the property, the blue house behind. So it won't affect the view or access to the beach. The project includes some articulation. So there's some decks that are built-in, as you can see in these, some reduction of massing. So that does help open up some additional view corridors to the ocean. And finally, this project provides conforming parking. So currently, there's six spaces on the street, or six, room for six cars on the street. This would remove one of those cars and provide a two-car garage. So it, in theory, would remove two cars off the street for the residents and put it into the garage. Staff has made the findings in the, in the staff report and recommends that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and find the project in sequoia and approve the Thomas Residence project. I'm available for any questions and the applicant, Amy Krieger, from Brian Jeanette Architect is here as well.
Thank you, David. Commissioners, any questions of staff on this item? Nope. Commissioners, any ex parte communications?
None.
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 Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe the applicant is here. Do you have a presentation or any comments you would like to make?
Good evening. My name is Amy Krieger and I'm with Brian Jeanette Architecture. I, David did a wonderful job with his presentation. I don't have anything to add at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions. We've reviewed all the conditions of approval and accept them.
Yeah, you beat me to it. Well done. Okay, great. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Okay?
Just have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The easement with the neighbor, it sounds like? So is that the old rent probably when they were more north-south facing, or gosh, almost east-west? But is that they run through, any progress on that, or do you guys have a good relationship?
Yes, well, we have an agreement with 704 next door on the boardwalk to run, to disconnect the utilities or run under their house at the moment and put them into the side yard. And we've worked, we're working on the documents. We just wanted to wait until we had a project to get them finalized. But they'll be done before, before we pull the building permit.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up to the audience. Does anybody from the audience wish to comment on this item?
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I just have a very tiny comment on handwritten page 26. The page begins with a very long justification for various variances that are requested. And this one is about the third-floor stepback. And the very last sentence of that long paragraph says, "Compliance with Title 20 would necessitate the relocation of the third floor and a substantial redesign of the project." I would submit that if that is being offered as a independent reason for granting a variance, it's a very strange reason for granting a variance. The fact that you would have to have a different design to comply with the code, implication is you could do that. And just the fact that this design does not comply, does not seem to me to be a reason to grant a variance. The other reasons may be justifications, but that last sentence does not seem to me to be a justification at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, staff, any comments for the record?
Yes, that's just one of the multiple facts that we put in there and that moving it, it would, you know, move the staircase is, you know, repeating up the stair, you know, up the multiple floors. So it would cause a shift. It might not be major, but it is something that is considered as a, as a fact with that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commissions for any questions, comments. Commissioner Rosine?
David, I just had one quick comment in regard to the actual resolution itself. There's a discussion on handwritten page 23 where the floor area is called out as 3,280 square feet. But I believe, which is correct, and I'm sorry, on page 23 is the page where it says it's actually 3,308 square feet. So that's just a typo.
Yeah, that, Vice Chair Rosine, that was a memo that we sent out, I think, two days ago about just correcting those in the resolution, so.
I apologize, I missed that.
No worries.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments or a motion? Commissioner Rosine?
I could make the findings for a variance at this property. So I would make a motion to approve this variance.
We have a second. I'll go ahead. As the Commissioner, a second to this item.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, congratulations. Okay, moving on. Item number three, sit-means-sit-for-dogs commercial kennel. Site location, 1662 Orchard Drive. I will give staff one second for them to get seated so they can go ahead with their presentation.
Evening, Chairman Commissioners, Melinda Wayland, Planning Division. And this is a proposal for a new board and train facility. It's proposed over on Orchard, or Orchard Drive and Riverside Drive in the residential kennel district in Santa Ana Heights specific plan. And this is the only area in the city where it does allow accessory commercial kennels in conjunction with single-family homes. So the proposal is to maintain an existing single-family residence and construct a new 16-kennel board and train facility. And the proposal includes adding a two-car garage for the residential property as well as the code-required parking in the rear and also a grass training area. So this shows a little bit more of the area and surrounding uses. There's an existing 12 kennels on the block. And many of them, or a majority of them, were carried over from the county when this area was part of the county jurisdiction. The stars on the map indicate the use permits that are current with the city of Newport Beach. But most of them have been grandfathered in. And included is, there was a noise analysis provided by the applicant from RK Engineering. And to mitigate any potential noise, there is proposed six-foot block walls, noise walls, to mitigate noise to the adjacent residential properties. And so the operational characteristics include, it's a board and train. So the owner, manager is present at all times, living on site by appointment only and no walk-ins, minimum stay five to seven days with a maximum of 16 dogs. And maximum of five dogs in the outdoor area with limited hours. And then the sound wall is provided and parking is provided on-site. So with a noise analysis, the findings to support the CUP are within the resolution and facts in support of the findings. The design fits within the neighborhood and they are not building out the site. The structures proposed are smaller. And the number of kennels on-site are less than recent approvals in the area. And this provides a comparison of recent use permit approvals of the dog kennels. So the maximum number of dogs is 16 and the parking is provided on-site. And it is a board and train facility which will help mitigate the traffic to the site. Included in the application is a lot merger to use the landlocked rear portion of rear property that's actually currently a separate parcel. And staff did receive, as you were also, you were also emailed the concerns from two neighbors. One of them is from a neighbor over on Pegasus and another one is a neighbor not directly adjacent but a lawn orchard. And both of them express concern of the overall impact of, at the kennels to the surrounding neighborhood. And including the dog walking, the noise, and property maintenance. So staff was able to research the code-related cases in the last few years. And there, there aren't many. There's a few barking dog complaints. But it seems that most of the complaints are from the kennels that do not have the control of the city-approved use permits and that have a lot more dogs than any of the city-approved use permits have approved. And then there have been some recent issues of parking. But again, this proposal is keeping the parking on-site. So staff was able to make all of the required findings and recommends approval to the Planning Commission. The operator, sit-means-sit owner Cindy Hunt is here and is available for questions and also has a short presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions of staff on this item? Commissioner Klauschermeyer?
Thank you for that presentation. I'm wondering if you have a site plan that you could pull up? I'm curious with the acoustical study that was performed. I'm looking at a site plan that's, that shows some existing walls and then some new block walls that are going in. So is the only new wall that's going in on page right here? And then is this a new wall here?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, I, sorry, I just want to understand where the, where the new block walls are going in and how that's just going to help mitigate the noise out here.
Yes, so the proposed block walls recommended by the noise analysis are highlighted in yellow. And those short walls run parallel to the neighbor to the rear of the site, which is an existing residential with a commercial nursery overlay, which you can see on this slide to the back.
Okay.
So at 20271 and 1692 Orchard.
Okay, and then could you go back to the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, so the two yellow lines are the new existing walls. And then is the, is the kennel here totally enclosed?
So there's rear doors to each kennel that, that can be closed at night. And then there's a little individual outdoor areas. And so these noise barriers block the outdoor areas from the adjacent residential neighbor.
Okay, and then can the dogs go in and out at free will there?
No, they will, they have free time out there during the hours of operation. And then at night, they're closed in.
They're brought in?
To the kennel, yes. And then the outdoor grass training area is limited hours as well.
Okay, and then for the lot merger, it's the grass training area is the lot that is being merged in with the other lot?
That is correct.
Both owned by the owner of this property?
That is correct.
And what is the reason for the lot merger? Is that for the conditional use permit, it has to be one lot or?
Yes, so whenever you have a development, it can't cross over the existing property lines. And forever, for whatever reason, the rear grass training area is irregular lot that was never formally merged with the adjacent lot and has been vacant and landlocked and there's no access to it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Rosine?
This is really minor, but there's a condition of approval, number 31, which describes that there's, can't be anything within the setbacks. And the site plan shows that that's a six-foot setback, or excuse me, an easement, I'm sorry. And the site plan shows that there's a six-foot easement there. And the site plan also shows that the property appears to encroach one foot within that easement area. I'm quite certain that number 31 is just meant to pick that up when building permits are issued, but it was just something of note. Otherwise, I don't have any other comments.
Okay, Commissioner Harris?
Do you know how many CPs have been given out by the city versus the county and which ones they are?
Yes, so the properties indicated with a star have use permits from the city. And there's three existing, and this will be the fourth.
And you said they haven't had any complaints of the noise or the other issues from the city approval?
There's not a history demonstrated complaints from those use permit properties from the city.
Right, okay. Ex parte communications, I'll start with Commissioner Rosine.
None.
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 Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the, I believe the applicant is here. Do they want to make a comment or have a presentation?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Cindy Hunt and I'm the owner of Sit Means Sit Dog Training. And I believe she has a little presentation to start. I'm joined here tonight by Clay Hunt, who's our Vice President, and Micah Aberley, who's our Operations Manager. They also happen to be my husband and my son, so we are a family business. We started about 15 years ago in Colorado Springs, Colorado, and about 10 years ago, we moved to Huntington Beach. We expanded our business. And we've been serving the residents of Newport and Orange County since then. In searching for the ideal location, we came upon the Riverside Drive area and we realized right away that it was the ideal location to expand our business in Newport Beach and serve our customers better so that we could be a little bit closer. Our leadership team does bring a lot of leadership in the way of years of experience in business and administration. And we've really enjoyed incredible success in our business and we feel very fortunate. We attribute this to our values-driven culture and, and our incredible staff that we have. Our focus in our business is primarily obedience training, but we also have a therapy dog program where we go out into the community and meet with folks. And most recently, we have partnered with a large sporting goods store and we're donating a service dog to a veteran. So we're doing some community outreach as well. Our business model is a board and train model, which is a little bit different than some of the kennels in the area in that our focus is just training. So we don't do any straightboarding, daycare, there's no dog walking involved. All of the training will take place right on our facility and that's what the grass training area is for. We have a short video to show you. Oh, and just, let's see, is it the? So there's just the, the picture of when we purchased. This is a little view of our staff. Again, our values-driven culture with our core values, and again, this is how we make decisions, all based on core values and what's, what's the best for our company and the community as well. This is just a little video shot that shows a previously aggressive dog that we worked with and was evaluated by OC Animal Care and put back into the community and was able to come out of his muzzle and actually be a good citizen in the community again. And this is a dog that went through our training. This goes over the therapy dog and the community outreach I spoke of and that we're donating a service dog to a veteran here coming up. And here's our little video. This just shows our Huntington Beach facility, shows a little bit about our obedience training and what a typical day looks like. I also want to just add that we have reached out to the local neighbors in the area for feedback and any comments or concerns that they may have, and we've incorporated into our planning as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. While I have you there, do you, are you in agreement with the recommended conditions of approval?
Yes, we are.
Great. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Klauschermeyer?
You mentioned some outreach to the neighbors, which I think is great. What was some of the feedback that you got from them and how have you incorporated that into the design of this business?
Yeah, so we actually went back and reviewed the video from the hearing about the animal shelter. And we were able to get the names of those folks who had called in with comments and concerns. And so we went to their, we visited them at their, we knocked on their door and just, and visited with them. One of the gentlemen, his name was Davis, had recommended during that hearing that perhaps some of the kennels would have their own dog park-type area. And so that's what really sparked us to incorporate the training area, the grass training area. Because one of the big complaints that we hear in the neighborhood as we moved around and talked to people was the neighborhood, as we moved around and talked to people, was the dog walking that's happening. Evidently, there are multiple dogs being walked at a time, and they feel like it's a disruption to the neighborhood. So our training will take place in our own facility, on the grass training area, and there will be no need to walk dogs. As a matter of fact, at our facility in Huntington Beach, it's a strict policy that we don't walk the dogs, because we don't want to risk them getting away, or having an accident, or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
Commissioner Harris? Dogs that are here, will they rotate to Huntington Beach, or will they only be here?
They will only be here. So it's two separate locations. And we found that the small 15-dog kennel works really well for our business model. Keeps it small and very manageable.
And then if there are issues, complaints, I mean, there's someone on site 24 hours, it's, I'm guessing, noise at night or something, maybe?
Yes.
Side, I mean, how you mitigate those things, just have someone on site and?
Yes, we do. And when we visited the neighbors, I actually gave them our personal cell phone numbers, and I invited them to call with any feedback. And I know that many of the neighbors talk, and they've lived there for quite a long time, and I invited them to share that number. So it would be a direct line to us, should they have any feedback, questions, concerns, we will be there for them.
Great, thank you. And any other commissioners? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody from the audience would like to comment on this item? Right, please state your name and give it to three minutes. Thank you.
My name, Harold City Council. My name is Mike Way. I live across 16, adjacent to 1662 for 27 years. And the previous owner's father, I talked to him, he purchased that property after World War II. So it's almost 80 years as a residential property. I have nothing to against Ms. Humm, but because she said she doesn't want to walk the dog. Lately, these three years for COVID, we can see people, the other kennel, walking 10 to 12 dogs on the street. I mean, we have to drive, really slow down to drive. That's very dangerous for public safety. And no one, I don't see the city done the environmental impact on that. Our traffic, our parking capacity, you know, capacity utilization of the parking. I did math for you. Let's do it later. And so I want to keep it as a residential. But I would like to miss Humm to replace other kennel, but not building a new one. Secondly, it's a safety. And I, 27 years ago, when moving, which I live across 1662, so I can tell you about 500 feet around us, there's only two cars parking a hour or more per day. But right now, it's 50 cars out of 60 parking, about. So I did a math for you. That's about, we have 60 parking there, but the annual growth rate of 11.2% of demand of new parking from current kennel. So they have more, their car is parking on the street, a more, a hour or more. I don't see city ever done that. I did it for you. So in 10 years, what will happen, 2033, there will be 164 cars a hour or more, but only other 60 parking. So that's 300% over the capacity. In 20 years, if you are the planning planner, you should know, there will be 2043, there will be 540 cars out of 60, only 60 cars parking. There will be 900% overflow. In 30 years, 2033, there will be 1,800 cars you needed to park a hour or more. If you do, I don't, I don't see this, I don't see this as an exact science, but you should do the feasibility analysis regarding the capacity of parking of current kennel, instead of adding anything new. And I will give you this later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Yep, please come on up, state your name.
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. I just noticed in the conditions of approval on handwritten page 28, most of them are mandatory. But when you get to condition 11 about the conduct of the business during the nighttime hours from 10 to 7 a.m., it uses the word "should" instead of "shall." It seems to be direction or guidance, or request rather than a requirement. And I was just wanting to verify that that is intentional. It seems possible that it is intentional, because that does not seem to be used as a fact to support any of the findings. So it could be, but I just, it seems strange that the language changed midway through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Susan Doan, and I live at 1624 Orchard Drive. And just before I begin reading this, I think that none of you have ever either been to Orchard Drive, Riverside Drive, you live there, near there, or next door there. And I live next door to kennels. And they all promise what Ms. Hunt has promised. And I promise you that when you hear 16 dogs at 16 kennels barking 24/7, it's a little unnerving. And while they say they have wall abatements, that's not true. So before, I've appeared here many times ejecting these kennels, and I've been ignored, and no longer phone returns, and I have complained. And I'm one of the ones that has complained, and to not be counted is unnerving. Perhaps Orchard Drive and Riverside Drives in Newport Beach, where I've lived since late 2015, should be renamed Kennel Drive. Currently, there are 16 kennels on those drives, and I guess only three or four of them have permits. That's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and now 16 kennels. I love dogs, and yet you want to put in another kennel. But like the other residents on nearby Orchard, I like the tranquility that comes from living in a residential neighborhood. This is not zone commercial. R stands for residential, C stands for commercial. Her other kennels are commercial zoned. That has almost appeared from Orchard Drive, and yet the council keeps approving kennels, kennels. There, when is enough enough regarding all these dogs that are walked on our residential streets? That could be a thousand dogs a day. When is enough enough for the residue or the full donations from some of these dogs that do their business? Some of it's picked up, but most of it isn't. And when it is, it's often dumped in our trash cans if we forget to put them back that day. When is enough enough about the coming and going of pet owners delivering and retrieving pets? Both Orchard and Riverside are cul-de-sacs, so it's just not a one-way in. It's a U-turn and come back out. So that's twice. I can't tell you the number of, I sometimes can't even get into my house because the cars are parked there, or the construction cars, or cars are there. And it is, it is, it's a nuisance, and it's annoyance. I can't even have people over, or friends over, or my own workers come over because of the cars from all the neighborhood. And not only that, the kennels on Riverside Drive are told to park in front of my house. I've had my mail stolen. They walk on my yard. They use my yard for their bathroom. And yet you guys want to approve another kennel. I think what they're doing is fine. And I only heard about this five days ago, or I would have done more. But I suggest that. I have a copy here of your ordinances from the Orange County Board of Supervisors, and a complaint I will file, should you decide to approve this.
Thank you, Susan. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Dill. My mother is Susan Doan, and she lives in that neighborhood, and I come to visit her often. And according to this meeting agenda, you want to exempt this project from SEQA guidelines and permits. I do find it interesting, after watching that video, that their Huntington Beach location is in a commercial area, not in a residential one. I have visited this neighborhood for a number of years and experienced the noise and the smell firsthand. You say that this kennel, while housing 16 dogs, will have no significant environmental effect. I beg to differ. 16 dogs poop and pee an average of what? Two to three times a day? If they are out walking and the poop is cleaned up, the bags often end up in the neighborhood trash cans, and that is totally unacceptable. Never mind the damage to the lawns of those in the neighborhood. 16 dogs also means 16 owners coming in and out of that neighborhood every day. Every day. What about the emissions of the increased traffic? Never mind the increase of traffic that the other kennels produce. I'm willing to bet that there has never been an environmental impact done on those. Never mind the fact of all of them together, let alone one more. And this one maybe won't have to either. Maybe with 16 kennels, there needs to be a study of the emissions and the level of dog donations, both the ones that's picked up and the one that is not. This is a little neighborhood, and I hope that it's a little bit more significant to you than it seems to be, putting all of these dog kennels and all of this craziness going on in this neighborhood. It's changing the property values and the environmental risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, I believe the applicant's still here. If you would like to respond to any questions or comments that are statements that were made, you're more than welcome to at this time.
Hello, thank you. Cindy Hunt. I'm the owner of Sit Means Sit. And I first wanted to just speak to the traffic concern. Our model is a little different in the sense that we offer pickup and drop-off services for our clients. The dogs aren't coming and going daily, but rather either five-days, 10-days, or 20-day stays. So our lessons are conducted at the owner's home. We offer a little more of a high-end service to our clients, so we offer pickup and drop-off. And again, it's not a daily service. As far as the noise goes, we're unique in that as well. We are a dog training facility, and one of the number-one goals that our clients have is to decrease nuisance barking. So on day one, the dogs that are checking in with us are issued a remote collar. We're known for being experts with remote collar training. And right away, day one, we work on the quiet command, because we know that that's one of our clients' major goals, is to have their dogs not be barking in their backyards, or barking when their guests come over. So that is one of the first commands we teach our dogs in our program, and it's strictly enforced at all of our facilities, that we have a quiet kennel. As a matter of fact, when we get inspected by OC Animal Control, they often make comments of how quiet it is when they walk into the back. And we always jokingly say, well, we are a dog training facility, so we want to practice the right thing. So we do keep a quiet kennel. We already spoke to the walking in the neighborhood. We won't be doing any walking in the neighborhood with our dogs. So there won't be issues of picking up and that kind of thing.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, bring it back to staff real quick. Just any comments for staff, and then just maybe if you want to clarify on the conditions of approval, number 11, the word "should" versus "shall?"
Certainly, I'll go ahead and tackle that. Well, first of all, this isn't allowed use in this particular zone, subject to a conditional use permit. And if you feel the characteristics of the use, and the conditions are appropriate, then we recommend approval. We do want to change condition number 11, change that from "should" to "shall." And I think the applicant indicated some of the characteristics of this use that kind of supported the staff's recommendation for approval. You know, it won't generate the same amount of traffic that other kennels may, and that we think it is properly conditioned to control the noise. And so we do recommend approval. So happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and bring it back to this commission for any questions, comments, discussion, or a motion. Yeah, Commissioner Lowry?
Yeah, just a quick question from Melinda. Just before our Newport Beach annexed this property, do we know historically, again, this is, don't expect you to know this, because it just came up, but how long that was zoned residential kennel before Newport Beach annex? I mean, it was, I'm assuming it has a long history of this land use, is basically what I'm getting at?
Yeah, it does, but I do not know exactly how long.
Commissioner Harris?
Seems like there might be some kind of bad actors over there, possibly grandfathered in. Is there anything we can do to wrangle those guys in, or only kind of when they come to us and ask for something, or, you know, want to make a change, bring them to our standards?
So they do have a, they all do, they all have active kennel permits through Animal Control, and they do inspections every two years. But pertaining to the amount of dogs they were allowed through the county, we do not have control over that. But Animal Control does respond to complaints and inspects every two years, and they have to have an active kennel permit, which they all do.
If they did come to remodel or redo their facility, would they have to then conform to our code then, at this point, or at that point? Or would they be able to grandfather?
Yes, if they exceed, oh, sorry, didn't interrupt.
No, it's okay. Or would they be able to grandfather in their numbers of dogs, you know, the issues that seem to be coming up?
So there is a limited amount of remodeling allowed under their existing permits, but if they exceed those thresholds, expand their operation, they would have to come in for a new use permit, similar to, I believe, Amore for Dogs, which was the most recent one, done at the end of the cul-de-sac.
And Commissioner Harris, if I could interject real quick. So if there are complaints, I do encourage the residents to go ahead and reach out to the city's Code Enforcement Division. So they can jump on our city's website, type in "code enforcement," and they can file a complaint online. Or there's a phone number on the website, too, for code enforcement, 644-3215.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or do I have a motion?
I'll move agenda item number three, Sit Means Sit for Dogs Commercial Kennel, PA 2022-132.
Motion, we have a second? Oh, second. Great, let's call for a vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations to the applicant. Okay, next item, item number four. I'll give staff a quick second here to get their affairs in order.
Chair Elmore, Jocelyn will take the chair here and provide the lion's share of the presentation here. This is a conditional use permit for a car wash for Fletcher Jones Airport Shuttle. It's also a lot merger. And Jocelyn Perez will provide that presentation.
Great. And I have site location. So this is Fletcher Jones Airport Shuttle and Car Wash, site location 2172, 2192, and 2222 South Bristol. And Jocelyn, when you are ready. And the clicker's up here on the?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Jocelyn Perez. I'm with the Planning Division. And this, your next public hearing item is the-
Excuse me, one moment, please. Excuse me, the audience members, can you please, excuse me, in the audience, if, take your conversations outside, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. And the next public hearing item is for the Fletcher Jones Airport Shuttle and Car Wash. The project's site is on South Bristol Street, approximately one mile south of the John Wayne Airport.
One second. Excuse me, audience, can you please take your conversation outside, please? All right, go ahead.
The next slide I have for you is the land use designations of the general plan. You'll see that the majority of the surrounding land uses are commercial, but there is residential in that tan-yellow color behind the subject property. The site is zoned Santa Ana Heights specific plan. The whole area is actually zoned Santa Ana Heights specific plan. This used to be under the jurisdiction of the county and was annexed by the city of Newport about 20 years ago. Within the Santa Ana Heights specific plan, there are sub-land uses, which I have color-coded. And I'd like to highlight that the subject properties are within a strip of general commercial. All right, the existing condition, the red property is the current Fletcher Jones Airport Shuttle operation. It began operating in 2007 under a use permit from the city. It began operating in 2007 under a use permit from the city. The green-shaded property was formerly occupied by Enterprise Rent-A-Car. They ceased operations in early 2020. After that, Fletcher Jones began acquiring the two properties and currently uses them as overflow parking for their airport shuttle operation and provides car washes and detailing for preferred members. So here's a photograph of the car wash facility and the detailing area. While these two areas are covered, you will see that they are pretty open air. There's no noise attenuation or containment to prevent stormwater from entering the site. The proposed project is to demolish all of the existing infrastructure on that enterprise site, combine the three parcels, and build a new car wash. Detailing bays, the vacuuming equipment for the detailing bays will be inside that new enclosed car wash, build a new trash enclosure, and enhance the landscaping to provide not only screening but buffering from the residential uses to the rear. I'd like to point out that this request is really, in regards to the construction of the new car wash facility, there are no operational changes as part of the project. And to help visualize what I just explained, here's the site plan for the proposed project. We've got the car wash, the detailing bays, trash enclosure, all that landscaping. The enterprise site currently has no onsite landscaping, so it's going to go from zero to all of that green that provides the buffering, screening, and bioinfiltration for stormwater. Next, I have highlighted along the rear of the property a slump block wall that helps with noise attenuation and is also required by code. And then there is that blue-shaded area. That's the existing airport shuttle drop-off area where customers park, exit their vehicles, and board the shuttle for the airport. That red line that represents the security gate, customers are not allowed behind that red security gate. That's when staff takes the customers' cars and valets them behind the security gate. So the reason we're here this evening, the project requires the approval of a lot merger to consolidate the three parcels into one, and approval of a conditional use permit for the three uses I've described, the car washing, parking, and airport shuttle service. For a use permit, staff is evaluating whether the request is consistent with the code requirements, and then also the compatibility with the surrounding land uses. And the number-one item I'd like to highlight in this slide is the potential for noise generation. A car wash and detailing can be a really noisy activity, but the project will enclose these operations and move them from being just in those little tents I showed earlier to in the building. And as you can see from the noise contours, there's no noise that's anticipated to leave the site. And so this project actually results in a reduction to noise at the site. The other part of the request is a lot merger. Similarly, we're looking at whether there's existing utilities that can serve the site, if the merger complies with code, and if it's consistent with surrounding development. This is, this project is in a developed area of the city, and as you can see on this slide, I've highlighted a few properties within the general area that have similar lot dimensions. Staff has included various conditions approval that are site-specific to help ensure that this use is not problematic and it operates harmoniously with the surrounding land uses. As I've mentioned, the airport shuttle is in existing use, and some of the conditions, specifically number five, that prohibits the shuttle from using the residential streets, that's been carried over from the existing use permit. With that, staff does recommend approval of the project. Next steps would be to conduct the public hearing, find the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and approve the, or adopt the draft resolution. Staff would like to make one revision to the draft resolution. Condition of approval, number 41, staff would like to add in that this, the repair to any damaged or broken curb and gutter will be at the discretion of the public works inspector. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. We have a representative of the applicant here today, Mr. Austin Hahn. He's also, he has a brief presentation that he can show the commissioners if they'd like. If not, he's also available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff at this time? Nope, seen it. Okay, commissioners, ex parte communications. Start with Commissioner Rosine. None.
None.
None. None for me.
None.
Okay. At this time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. The applicant is here. You have the opportunity to review your presentation or make any comments. Okay? Don't have an interest for that? Great. Then I will go ahead and.
Chair Elmore, if we could just get confirmation that they agree to the condition.
Can I have the applicant come up just to discuss the conditions of approval? And then are you in agreement with the recommended conditions of approval and with the modifications, staff?
Yes, I received the conditions earlier this week, and I actually did make comments on them. And I think one of the revisions that was just mentioned was a result of my comment. So I have reviewed the revised conditions and agreed to them.
You're in agreement. Great. Thank you. Okay. Any from the audience would like to speak on this item? Okay. Seen none. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to this body for any additional questions, comments, recommendations, motions.
I had one question, Jocelyn. What is that structure behind it? It's a, is that a parking lot or a garage? What is the?
There are two properties that are behind the project site. There is a non-conforming residential use that's in the business park land use designation, and then there is a residentially-zoned property that has a tennis court and a detached garage-like structure.
Great.
Private.
Any other questions? Any motions? Commissioner Rosine?
So I've used this service before, and it's, it's actually very nice. And it's a very, it's a great facility. I do have a question, though, because the last flight in to John Wayne is at 10:00. Is that not true? Is there? Is 11:00?
Incoming is 11:00. Outgoing is 7:00.
And I guess my question is, is 9:00 PM, are you forced to become maybe the last guy to get in? Or is there any benefit to allowing this facility to stay open till 10:00, if they should want to, to accommodate for later travelers? It was just a thought.
Yeah, these hours of operation were, you know, at the applicant's request. We feel they're appropriate. You know, having a slightly later closing time, you know, doesn't present any issues that we can see as we sit here today. You know, it is a commercial zone. While there are residential properties to the rear, you know, it's a fairly unique residential property that doesn't have any residential, it's a residential storage building. And then we have non-conforming residential. But I think 10 o'clock would be appropriate in that area, given the existing zoning surrounding uses.
I was just offering that as a suggestion for the owner, should they care to take advantage of that, and if the commission cared to implement that.
I will go ahead and open up the public comments. Would the applicant be amenable to a 10:00 PM closing as part of the hours of operation? Applicant, please.
My name's Senator Coleman. I'm the architect of the project. I can't speak for Fletcher Jones Group on that, but I'm happy to pass it along. We would want to keep the car wash hours contained, but I certainly think that we can go back to the group and pass it along.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, if I might add, you know, adding an extra hour here doesn't mean you have to operate it that way. It just gives you the flexibility if you ever wanted to operate it a little bit later, so.
I think that's great. No, I'm sure they'd be very open to that.
So as their representative, are you amenable to that, or are you?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Will I have a question, please?
Sorry. The public hearing's closed. I've closed the public hearing. Okay. Bring it back. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion? Commissioner Rosine?
I'll make a motion to approve this item, should the commission care to incorporate the additional hour to accommodate for later flights.
Do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Harris? Great. Call for a vote.
I have a comment, I have a question.
Sir, the hearing's closed.
Public hearing's closed.
Ask for city employee for city data delay during the survey.
Sir, the public hearing is closed.
I know. That's my question.
Sir, you could please take it outside. Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations to the applicant. Thank you. Okay, moving on, item number five. So this is the Balboa Island Village Parking Management Overlay District Plan Implementation. The site location's Balboa Village, generally between Adams and A Street on the Balboa Peninsula. And I believe Ben and staff have a presentation.
Good evening, Chair Elmore, planning commissioners. Ben Zadiba with the Planning Division have a very brief presentation for you, and the city is the applicant, so we do not have any additional presentations after. Starting with background, I just want to share that this particular item has been in the works for quite some time. I know the context and background in your staff report starts with 2015, but actually prior to that, as part of the study to revitalize Balboa Village and bring some additional energy into that area, I mean, it was included originally in the 2012 adopted Balboa Village Master Plan, which includes several strategies to help revitalize and re-energize Balboa Village, bring some new economic development, and help in particular with the off-season when it is a little sleepy down there and could use some additional foot traffic. In 2015, the city council updated the zoning code to include the Parking Management Overlay District for Balboa Village. You'll notice in 2017, I noted that the Coastal Commission certified the city's local coastal program. However, they took issue with some of the language in this particular Balboa Village Management Parking District Overlay. And so therefore, the city delayed that approval and took it out of the local coastal program at that time. And you'll notice in 2020, we brought it back as an amendment. The Coastal Commission provided some suggested modifications to the language and subsequently approved that amendment, and it was adopted by city council and incorporated into Title 21, the implementation plan thereafter. In February 2022, we did submit a CDP to the Coastal Commission as the program and plan covers areas that are within the Coastal Commission's permitting jurisdiction. However, eight months later, in October 2022, we were informed that the Coastal Commission's council was of the opinion that no development was occurring in the coastal zone, that the Coastal Commission retained jurisdiction over, and therefore, the city has the authority to issue its own CDP to implement this plan. In Title 21, it specifically says "Commission," and that's a reference to you, all the planning commissions. So the CDP cannot be issued by the zoning administrator. It must be issued by the planning commission to implement the plan. So the real purpose of this plan is to protect the unique character of Balboa Village, so that talks to storefronts, not encouraging intervening parking curb cuts or parking facilities, and keeping the charm that Balboa Village currently has. Establishing parking programs to serve all user groups, so that would talk to visitors, residents, as well as employees and employers in the area. Modifying parking requirements to allow efficient use of supply. Balboa Village is constrained geographically and by the amount of parking that it currently has, so looking at how do we efficiently operate within the scheme of the existing development. And then providing enhanced signage through wayfinding sign program. And lastly, greater accommodation of public transit alternative modes. I'll talk a little more about that in the next slide. So the plan has several implementing components, and they are enumerated in your staff report a little further. There is a lot of overlap between the staff report language, the plan language, and the code. Alternative transportation discusses the Balboa Peninsula Trolley and encouraging that to continue, as well as including amenities like bicycle racks and bicycle facilities where there is a demonstrated demand. So for instance, if the city notices that there are bicycles piling up on a guardrail somewhere or someplace that could have a bicycle rack placed, this plan would give the city that authority to place that bicycle rack there. Protect and manage existing parking. There are provisions in the plan and in the code that require existing parking supply off-street to be retained, and also public spaces should be maintained as well. Management discusses curb management as far as parking restrictions with timing, so the city does have the authority to change timing if it makes sense to do so. Enhanced wayfinding discusses signage. There was a recent revamping of wayfinding signage in the Balboa Village that was part of the Balboa Village Advisory Committee, which is now Sunset. They reviewed a comprehensive wayfinding signage program that looked to better direct traffic to the Balboa Ferry or to the boardwalk, and discussed where public parking would be located in a clear manner. Employee parking permit program offers discounted parking permits to employees of businesses in Balboa Village, and that lets them park in identified areas. And that has been a successful program that has been run since, I believe, 2019. Lastly, I want to touch on reduced and altered parking requirements. That's probably one of the more meaty components of the plan. It is enumerated in the code. But basically, new commercial ventures, most of them will not require additional parking if they are intensifying. So if you were to look at a retail sales storefront that maybe is underperforming and maybe not a business, a restaurant could take over without providing additional parking. There are some caveats. So residential parking is not included. If you were to rebuild a new home, you still have to provide a garage. And the same goes for mixed-use development. You have to provide the residential parking for the mixed-use residential units. However, the commercial could be exempt and waived under this program. There are uses, uses, sorry, uses that do require parking still, such as visitor accommodations like a hotel or a commercial recreation facility, like a movie theater. Larger, larger facilities that are more intense will still require parking under this program, assuming they are new or modified. There are also provisions discussing shared parking facilities with private property owners who have parking lots that are underutilized, and then gives the director some latitude therein to allow off-site parking and shared facilities. So the main part of this coastal development permit is coastal consistency. Staff acknowledges this is a little bit of an awkward process because this does mirror largely what is already in Title 21 and has been deemed consistent by the Coastal Commission. So the last bullet point you see there is Coastal Commission is supportive, just by the virtue of approving the local coastal program amendment that you see incorporated into Title 21 today. Importantly, it does reduce barriers to locating new visitor-serving commercial in the Balboa Village area. So again, talking about restaurants or other services that may be patronized by visitors. And then enhancing public access to coastal resources and recreation that can tie into the wayfinding signage program directing people to the boardwalk, and just more efficiently managing the existing parking supply. I do want to note that the overlay includes a provision that the city should be reevaluating the parking situation in Balboa Village every two years, so that if the village becomes very successful or re-energized, there is opportunity to go back and revisit some of this, some of these provisions. With that, we do recommend you conduct a public hearing, find this not subject to CEQA and statutorily exempt from CEQA, as a matter of fact, and adopt the resolution to approve this CDP, which includes Exhibit A, the draft plan that we've put together. It does include some strategy examples, which I wanted to call out as examples. The city would like to build in some flexibility with respect to how to actually implement the plan. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ben. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant staff? Nope. 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 Okay. Any ex parte communications? None.
None.
I talked to two property owners in the area.
None.
One property owner.
Great. Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? Do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item only?
Hi, my name is Jim Petrelli. I own a duplex at 504 East Oceanfront, which is on the boardwalk, kind of near Adams Street, between Adams and Palm. I just had a couple of questions. Is the parking on Adams right now, which is allowed, is that going to change at all?
Yes, sir, you can please direct your comments to us.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And if we deem it, we will bring it back to staff.
Is it going to change the parking at all on Adams Street? Right now, you're, I don't see anything in here that changes it. But you're allowed to park cars on Adams Street like other public streets. Is that still allowed?
This isn't a Q and A, this is a public comment section, sir.
Oh, okay.
I would just recommend you go ahead and ask your questions, and then we'll go.
Okay, the other question I had is, I noticed it says there's 161 spaces that they're going to try to make more public. I assume that doesn't include any, like, I have three spaces for my duplex. That's not included in that 161, I would assume. But I just would ask for clarification on that.
Great, noted, thank you, sir. All right, next speaker, please.
Chair Elmore, members of the Planning Commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. I commented on this on writing, in writing. I don't know if you read those comments or not. One thing I did not mention there, and I did not see in the staff report or the presentation, is that in the Balboa Village Master Plan that this comes from, it was anticipated at that time that the allowing intensification of uses without requiring new parking had the potential to create spillover parking into an extensive area around there. And so the master plan included another component, separate from the parking management district in Balboa Village. There was going to be permit parking program in the surrounding areas to mitigate the effects of that spillover parking. That was never implemented because the residents did not want that program. But I didn't see any analysis here in considering the implementation of this new program, whether spillover parking is still anticipated or not, and how serious that problem might be. And then as to the details of it, I did suggest in writing that there's maybe a couple of typos here on handwritten page 31, referring to the Coastal Commission approval, when it's your approval, I think, that is needed. And then more generally, my comment is, this seems just kind of to be echoing what is already present in our municipal code, which was certified by the Coastal Commission. I believe it's a concept for how this would work, not exactly how it would be implemented. And many of the minor pieces of this, which would be the actual development, why it needs a coastal development permit, I think it was anticipated that that concept would be fleshed out in more detail than I find here. A few existing details are added or mentioned in this report to support the components that it's supposed to have. But the components that have not yet been realized, no more specification for them is provided here. So it's just reciting what is in the municipal code and the few existing programs that already support that. It's not showing how the rest of it will be implemented. So those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Seems very incomplete.
Understood, thank you. Any other public comments? Yep, I'll bring it back to staff to address maybe the question of the first Jim, and then maybe also the spillover comment by Mr. Mosher.
Sure, yeah, no problem, thank you.
Anything else you'd merit?
Thank you, Chair Elmore. So as far as Adams Street parking changes, there's nothing that is contemplated in this particular plan for changes on those existing parking parameters. I don't know if Brad, our traffic engineer, wants to elaborate. If he doesn't grab the mic, then I'll assume there are no changes planned. Residential parking, garages are not included in that off-street parking pool. That is private, commercial parking that could be better utilized. So this is not including someone renting out their garage for commercial venture purposes. As far as the spillover parking, I believe Mr. Mosher is referencing there was a contemplation for residential parking permit program. That was something that was explored. Ultimately, as Mr. Mosher commented, the residents did not want it. And further, the Coastal Commission was not supportive of that element. So it was not carried forward any further. There is no analysis of spillover in here. But that is something that could happen if the village were to be successful. Again, we do have the two-year requirement to re-review if that were to come to fruition.
Great, thank you very much. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to this commission for any questions, comments? None? Commissioner Harris?
The potential private utilization, could that offset residential as well?
I don't know that the code specifically talks to that point, but I do not believe that is consistent with the intent of this program.
And then if there was a problem, like Mr. Mosher was speaking of spillover, the two-year review, you know, every two-year review, could that possibly be brought back up? Or would that have to go back to coastal, goes in a circle?
There's enough flexibility built into this plan that would allow us to make changes. And I do think the employee parking permit program is intended to help divert some of that spillover because it does have a very specific area that the employees are allowed to use those permits in. So it is a controlled spillover effect, if you will, as it is today.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Rosin? No, do we have a motion from anybody?
Make a motion to approve Overlay Plan PA 2017 046.
Great.
I'll second.
Great, call for a vote?
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, congratulations, applicant. I assume what everybody's here for, this is discussion item, item number six, fractional home ownership. The location is citywide. And I believe, staff, you have a presentation.
Chair Elmore, Simone Georgis, your Community Development Director, good evening. So I'm going to just make a few words before I hand it over to Mr. Murillo. This is an item that the City Council has handed down to the Planning Commission to work on. The Planning Commission did form an ad hoc committee with Commissioners Rosin and Lowry. We have spent enormous amount of time with staff and both Commissioners, Commissioner Lowry and Commissioner Rosin. So thank you to their time putting into this. There was a lot of hours spent onto this. They are presenting to you, or presenting it for them. This is their recommendations on how to address fractional ownership. This is a very difficult subject. It's not perfect. But what we're looking is feedback from the commission. What are your thoughts on this? And what we like to do is take your thoughts and take those to the City Council on March 14th. And let the City Council take this issue up and address it further. It'd be great if there's consensus amongst the Planning Commissioners, but if there's not, then there's not. But I do encourage you to share your thoughts on this item. It is a difficult item. We have been working very hard, from a staff standpoint, with the commissioners to address these issues. So we'll go ahead and hand it to Mr. Murillo. He'll make a presentation on recommendations, and then we can get your thoughts.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Simone. Good evening, Chair Elmore, members of the commission. My name is Jaime Murillo, principal planner. So before I get into the recommendations, just want to provide a little bit of refresher on what is fractional home ownership. So it's essentially partial ownership of property. It's common with commercial property, and it's common with residential property. So family members buying property together, or a group of friends buying property together, that's been commonplace. However, what's this new emerging trend and kind of the changes in technology is how easy it is to purchase property now through online sales. So there's a number of companies that are popping up now. Picasso is one of the larger ones. But we do have fractional homes in the city that are managed by Ember, as well as Nelson Family Estates. And so this is a new trend that makes it very easy to invest in vacation property. How it works, these properties are purchased under a limited liability corporation. Shares of these properties are sold, it's typically one-eighth share ownership. And then there's an operating agreement that's used to can manage the property. Typical operations are co-owners agree on the usage. And typically, there's like an online calendar that helps manage these co-owners' use of the property. A one-eighth share equals 45 days of calendar year. But typically, their stays are limited to no more than 30 days at a time. These homeowners do pay for their share of the property costs, and that includes maintenance costs, management, any HOA, cleaning, any costs associated with property, that's all shared amongst the fractional owners. And then a co-owner can share their, sell their share of the property later on. However, the reason we are discussing this topic is because the city has received a number of complaints. There's a lot of resident concerns regarding this new form of ownership. And the main concern is that they function more like short-term lodging. These residents come in for, you know, a week, two weeks at a time. And they have non-resident behavior, so they act like more on vacation. They might invite friends, so there may be, you know, additional noise disturbances or parking. The other concerns we've heard is that this is leading to the commercialization of residential neighborhoods. And it could impact housing affordability in the city by removing housing units and making it easier to purchase vacation homes and second homes. Next, I'd like to just provide a little bit of background on the direction we've received from the City Council and Planning Commission. So when we first started receiving complaints back in 2021, the City Council did hold a study session in November of 2021. At the time, there was only about four known homes. The City Council directed staff to study this item further and see what other cities were doing, and report back. We did consult with Sagecrest Planning Environmental, helped prepare a research report for us. When we returned to the City Council in 2022, we did have 11 known homes. After discussion with the City Council, they did direct staff to return with some options and action items. So we did return in September 27th of 2022. The City Council at that time decided not to pursue a moratorium just due to the difficulties with the legal findings that would have been needed to make the, adopt the moratorium. But they did initiate a zoning code, an LCP amendment if needed, and directed staff to continue working on kind of regulating these uses. But because it is something that's important to the community, they did direct staff to work quickly with the Planning Commission. And so in October of 2022, we did hold a study session with the Planning Commission. Staff presented a pretty comprehensive overview of the uses and offered a number of options and suggestions that the commission could consider. However, I think what we realized is this is an extremely complex matter, and it's too difficult to provide kind of recommendations to move quickly on this back to the City Council. And so the commission recommended the formation of an ad hoc committee, as Simone mentioned. And that did consist of Commissioners Lowry and Rosin, and also former Commissioner Wigan. They held a total of seven meetings. And they considered a number of topics, and that included, you know, what is the regulatory process that should be recommended? What are the locational restrictions? What development standards and operational standards should be considered? Should there be grandfathering provisions? During these meetings, they did receive input from our city attorney's office, as well as representatives from Picasso, and also input from residents. And so I'd like to do next is just share ultimately what the final recommendations are from the ad hoc committee. In terms of the regulatory process, the recommendation is to create a permit that we can use to regulate these uses. And instead of creating a new land use that's regulated through our zoning code, it was recommended that we regulate them more like short-term lodging, which is regulated in Title V of our municipal code, which is our business license and regulations section. In terms of permits, both the home itself should receive a permit and the property manager. And it's important that we clarify that these permits would only be applicable to co-owned property that's not managed and facilitated by a third party. And then that's so we don't unintentionally capture other properties that are held in common ownership by family members or friends. The second item is related to the location restrictions and maximum cap. So the ad hoc committee recognized that we do need to limit them in all residential zoning districts by establishing a maximum cap. In terms of what that cap should be, the recommendation is that the Planning Commission as a whole should kind of discuss this item and determine what that maximum cap should be. So that's one of the information items we're seeking from the commission today. It's recommended that any new fractional home provide parking that's in conformance with today's standards in terms of both number of spaces available and size. And also require that those parking spaces be free of any obstructions and available for use at all times. So there can't be any storage units or any other restrictions within the parking spaces. And that onsite parking shall be prioritized before any off, on-street parking. In terms of noise restrictions, obviously, compliance with city standards. But in addition to city noise standards, these units shall be prohibited from playing amplified sound outside or audible at neighbors' property lines from 10:00 PM to 10:00 AM. It's recommended that these, in order to get a permit, that a management plan be submitted to the city. This management plan shall address landscape maintenance requirements, kind of the trash collection plans when residents are home. How is trash going to be addressed? And then, most importantly, the management plan needs to identify a local contact person that is available to address any issues that arise. And so that should be a 24-hour contact person. They should be located within 25 miles and respond within 30 minutes of any calls. In terms of subletting, the recommendation is that we should prohibit subletting of these units for any purpose, including short-term rentals, but also guest usage when the owner is not present. Good neighbor policy is recommended, and this is a policy that would be written, posted within the interior of these units. And that explains the owner's responsibilities, includes the contact person information, clearly explains the parking rules, when street sweeping schedule is, trash collection, and what those noise restrictions would be. And then to ensure that these owners fully understand and acknowledge these rules, a condition of the permit is that each owner would have to submit owner acknowledgement that would be submitted to the city and explaining that they understand all the rules and the good neighbor policy and the prohibitions. And then lastly, there may be some properties that are, would be non-conforming to these new standards, possibly to the parking requirements. So it is recommended that a grandfathering provision be added and allows those non-conforming units to remain, but still require that a permit be obtained. And as Simone mentioned, we are seeking Planning Commission recommendations so that we can move forward, provide that recommendation to the City Council at their next meeting on March 14th. And so the options that the commission has is to support the ad hoc committee recommendations and assist in determining what a maximum cap should be, or modify any of these recommendations. And then alternatively, if it's difficult to come up with a consensus, even if there's no recommendation, that's okay. But we do need to proceed forward and take this back to the City Council. So that concludes my report. I'm available for any questions. I am going to leave kind of a summary of what the ad hoc committee recommendations are up on the screen for discussion purposes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, fun, fun. Any, any questions for staff?
Well, in terms of questions for staff...
I'm sorry, real quick, so here's what I was thinking of doing. As, we got some questions for staff. We'll allow the public to talk, come back. And then we'll, I think, kind of try to hammer out any recommendations we want to make there at the end. Does that work for you, everybody? Okay, great. So just any questions on the front end? No, okay. This is not a public hearing, but the commission will take public comment at this time. Does anybody from the audience wish to comment on this topic? Please state your name and comment under three minutes, thank you.
Yes, my name is Carmen Rosen. And I think one of the flaws of the recommendation... Yes, my name is Carmen Rosen, and I think one of the flaws of the recommendation is you cannot regulate timeshares, because that's what it is, that you do short-term lodging. One of the basics, principles of short-term lodging regulation is that you can prohibit short-term lodging, you can pull out the permit, and the owners of properties that have short-term lodging permits do not have property rights. Once these fractional owners own the property for forty-five days or whatever the time is, you cannot take away those property rights. So my question to staff, and I wish that code enforcement was present here, is how are you going to enforce the rules? You won't be able to. Code enforcement in our city is reactive, not proactive, so will be when you make complaints and when you say, oh, code enforcement, we'll take care of it. I have issues in my block with trash collection that have been going on for over a year, and we have no resolution yet, and code enforcement has been advised for a year. So I don't see how you can enforce regulations. So that's one of the issues. Also, I would like to see an status, an update from city staff of what other cities are doing. On February seventh, two thousand twenty-three, the City of Carmel, their city council approved an ordinance to ban Picasso business models. So they are taking proactive action to help the city. When we see these people, they are vacationers, they are not full-time residents. The children don't go to our schools, they don't vote in local, for local politicians, they do not participate in the census. We already have lots of residents, especially in the Balboa Peninsula area. So I see this very detrimental. I guess that the goal of the city maybe is to make a resource, a resort of the area and have no local residents. If that's the goal, then that's the way to go. Let Picasso and other companies buy their properties here. I think the goal should be to have more local residents. Regarding, in my previous presentation, they were talking about maximum distance or minimum distance between the properties, so that was taken out now. Prohibit subletting, how are you going to regulate them? I know that there are short-term rentals in my block that they use their parking for their own personal storage, is not being used for the guests. So how can you control all that? Again, very difficult.
Thank you.
Chair Elmore, members of the Commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. I think that the city staff has thrown out a number of red herrings to make this problem considerably more complicated sounding than it truly is. The most egregious of those, it seems to me, is this claim, which we keep hearing, that co-ownership of homes is common, has been for a long time, the only thing that's new is online sales. At your public meeting back in October sixth, when you last publicly talked about this, we were told fifty-six percent of the single-family homes in Newport Beach are co-owned or owned by a trust or an LLC. I would submit that I think very few, what distinguishes these from those is that these commonly owned, co-owned homes restrict the co-owners to use of that property for very limited recurring times, and I think very few of those other co-owned house or homes have any provision in it like that. So I don't think they're at all the same. We've heard, as you heard there, and as the council was told, we can regulate use, we can't regulate ownership, yet we hear now we're going to regulate ownership because we're having provisions that will apply only to owners. And then, we did not hear again tonight, but both you and the City Council were told, if you look at our current definition of timeshare, it refers to the words development and the word project, and if you turn it upside down and try to read it using things that came from other parts of the code, somehow this doesn't fit our definition of timeshare, which are prohibited except in certain commercial areas. But I think that it does. And since your last meeting, Carmen mentioned one of these, but also Park City, which, Utah, which was mentioned as a model to you of what regulation could look like, they did enact their ordinance on October twenty-seventh, and it prohibits fractional ownership in most residential areas, and the area that it does allow it in is extremely small, and it's the same area that timeshares are allowed in. And as Carmen mentioned, Carmel just two weeks ago enacted their ordinance, and what she did not say is, as we could do here, the City of Carmel already banned timeshares, their ordinance simply said that the fractional homeownership is a form of that. So their ordinance was confirming that they had already banned them in residential areas, and then they were adding additional prohibitions that they could not be advertised for sale so that they could go after not the comp, not just the owners, but the company doing the online sales. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Maureen Cotton, two oh six fifteen Street, president of the Central Newport Beach Community Association, which represents the residents between the two piers on the peninsula, which is the most impacted group in the city by these timeshares. To be honest with you, Mr. Mosher's letter to you dated yesterday clarifies everything that the city needs to know, because you've already, you've already put in ordinances that address timeshares. You, in your own ordinances, in, as stated in my letter, call timeshares and fractional homeownership the same, right? And it's because they have such short stays. And what Picasso hasn't told you, and you have to drill down into their website, is that the average, what they encourage people to stay is two to seven days. If you stay eight days, it counts as two stays, right? Which means you're going to have tremendous number of cleaning agencies and maintenance and all that kind of stuff that we have with short-term rentals. Now, you guys are proposing that they can like basically take cuts in front of all the people who have already gotten on the waitlist for short-term permits in the city, and they get to just jump ahead of the line? Personally, I'm number sixty-nine in the line, right? So I, I don't think that that's fair to the people who are already residents, who already own property, who follow the rules, right? So again, if you'll review both Mr. Mosher's comments in his letter, which is well documented and cross-references everything that's already in our codes and ordinances, the things that I've pulled and presented to you in my letter that show you exactly what Picasso is actually doing here, along with their peers, they're not, there are no thirty-day stays, you're not allowed to stay more than fourteen days, ever, and you have to wait another fourteen days before you can stay one more day in your alleged property. These are timeshares. Timeshares, as stated earlier, are limited in where they're allowed in our city, and that should not be expanded to the entire city. It should not be pretty much placed on the peninsula in Corona del Mar, which is where the abundance of short-term rentals already are, which you've already capped at fifteen-hundred and, I think, sixty-eight, right? So we, we've already absorbed all those, you guys put a cap on that for a reason, and I, and I applaud the zoning that's been done by the Planning Commission. But to allow this is to open the door for a whole lot of trouble, for the residents primarily, and for the character of our things, and it's, it's an incredible burden on our city services, the police, the fire department, ambulances, that, that are dealing with noise, dealing with garbage, dealing with all the abundance of having all these new people flood our, our neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And we've heard a lot on this topic, everybody, so I do implore you, if you have ideas that we haven't heard from people that have already spoken to, please bring those to the forefront. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission, Denise Oberman. I am an oceanfront resident in the mid peninsula, and I'm also a member of a leadership committee that has been organized across the neighborhoods in the coastal areas to specifically address this issue. We haven't gotten the, we didn't have the benefit of getting this information prior to this meeting. I would ask that the Planning Commission make this information available. Further, I would ask that we have a reasonable opportunity to provide input other than to be dancing on our feet and then be told that there's been plenty of resident input, because quite frankly, we don't know what resident input there has been or has not, because it hasn't been, there's been no transparency around that. So just moving ahead, and these comments are not intended to be exhaustive, because there hasn't been an adequate opportunity to know what your intentions are and your ultimate decisions. Fractional ownership businesses, such as Picasso and the others, that are establishing in our family residential neighborhoods, are actually corporate businesses with a commercial infrastructure involving scope of property development, acquisition, and, and extensive management across a venue of multiple sites. This cannot be considered as a business, it, it is commercial business, it's totally clear it's commercial business, and it cannot be considered to be comparable to a family or two that has got together individually, and they happen to have formed an LLC for trust reasons. These are commercial businesses in residential zones. So we are strongly opposed to the permitting of these commercial entities engaged in the business of fractional ownership and timeshare activity in our residential neighborhoods. It is interesting to note that Picasso and the others have moved freely into the neighborhoods, and I'm not going to finish what I had intended to say here, but I will follow up in writing and do so at the subsequent City Council meeting. They've moved ahead. There is definitely some question as to whether fractional ownership falls within the purview of timeshare ordinances that are already on the books and within the broader legal framework of what is timeshare. These are clearly not short-term lodgings, and they may have short-term lodging impacts, but from a structural standpoint, they are not. They are permanent, it's already been mentioned, they're property rights, and they're going to have, they are going to have an illiquid effect on our community in great contrast to S D L, regardless of how much code enforcement, and I, I'm not going again, go on with that. So permitting these, it does erode the character and integrity of our residential neighborhoods. We've already got some, and the impacts have been demonstrated. Further, I would say that permitting them represents a fundamental change. One minute, please.
Yeah, thirty more seconds.
Thank you. Fundamental change in the land use plans in our city and should not be treated impromptu. This is a change to the land use scheme that we have adopted and that we've been implementing in our community. May I just close by saying that we would request a copy of this presentation to be available?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Max H. Johnson, a twenty-eight-year resident of Newport Beach, currently reside in District One within the Balboa Peninsula Point community. As already stated, I would also request that the clarification and specification of this agenda item be available before the meeting and not have us residents be left in the dark about the specifics. I think it's ridiculous to not have had city staff through constant communication with multiple residents saying that they have nothing to offer on the specifics of this item before the presentation before us tonight. So that's not how this works, that's not how being transparent works, and so I think that that needs to be improved greatly next time. I also second the fact that these are timeshares, and timeshares are currently not allowed in the city of Newport, and in following what other well-run cities have already done and made the, you know, urgency to ban these timeshares, like Beverly Hills and other cities in Northern and Southern California, there has been an urgency from these cities showing the residents that they take the quality of life highly into consideration by at, at least either placing a moratorium or banning them outright. And the fact that we haven't placed a moratorium or banned them, it's ludicrous. When it was first presented to council, Diane Dixon and Joy Brenner and a few others were in favor of doing so, but to state that there was some legality or there was some legal reason to prevent a moratorium is ludicrous. If you ask legal experts, other cities that have done so had no repercussions and no issues. So I really urge the Commission to consider placing a moratorium or banning it outright. If not banning it, not taking the city's current, city staff's direction, but until making a decision and putting it back to council, at least putting a buffer, preventing a pause at least, until we can make a decision of what the city wants to do moving forward. But the fact that we're letting Picasso and these other companies come in and take away the quality of life in our neighborhoods, it's ridiculous. Not any one homeowner, none of you, city staff included, in their own cities, if they had one of these Picasso homes directly next to them, I guarantee you that their direction would have changed and would have been different tonight. If any of these homes were to reside next to your home with your kids and, you know, your grandchildren and your partners, you would not want these. You would want to place a moratorium, or you would want to place a ban. In our Peninsula Point, I might need like twenty, twenty-five more seconds, we have lost a quality of life with the Picasso homes in our direct neighborhood. The Peninsula Point, with over eight hundred homes, is a very tight-knit community. We know our neighbors, we look out for our neighbors, I'm very involved, formerly on the HOA, a current block captain, a current CERT radio.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Operator, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take fifteen seconds to finish this up. We're involved in our communities and we care to know our neighbors, but Picasso Homes and other businesses, such as these timeshares, do not give.
Thank you.
Any, any care. So thank you for allowing us who live here and reside here the time tonight.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Chair, Elmore and Commissioners. My name's Nancy Scarborough. I've spoken on this before. I too was frustrated at not having any information in advance of the meeting, so I don't have a prepared statement because I had no idea what was going to be presented. It's unfortunate, it doesn't usually happen that way, but we can probably do better. First, I'd like to say that I think that Jim Mosher's comments and Carmen Rosen's comments, written comments, deserve consideration. They have some lucid arguments, and those haven't really been discussed here tonight, but I do, they've been slightly discussed, but I think there's more discussion needed. I'll point, make a few points that have not been covered. One is that recently, in the fourth quarter, Picasso reduced their staff by thirty percent. Even more recently, they fired another hundred employees. They are not in a position to spend tens of thousands of dollars in a lawsuit, and I think that their bark is probably louder than, than is, should be. The second thing is that once a home is a fractional ownership home, because of the way the pricing works, the home is so overvalued that it will never return to our housing stock. They cannot sell it without taking a loss, and you will never get eight owners, all of them to agree to take hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in loss in their investment. So those homes are permanently out of our residential stock. They also skew the value of homes in the neighborhood because they are inflated by the purchase of the home and then the resale purchase to the eight owners. They are overpriced by, you know, sometimes a million, two million dollars. The third point I'd like to make is that the residents whose property tax represents the majority of the revenue in Newport Beach, forty-seven percent of the revenue of Newport Beach is directly a result of property taxes. Those. a result of property taxes, those residents deserve to be, have the primary consideration in this, in this matter, and not a business that's out of town. So I think that the focus really needs to be on what is best for the residents, not the ownership companies. And the last thing is, I talk to a lot of people. I have not talked to anyone who thinks that these are a good idea. There's no resident that I've talked to that said, wow, this is great, we should just, we should go full force on this. I think that we need to take a step back, stop this with a moratorium, do a very thorough study of these other cities who are currently having a legal, taking legal positions on this, and, and maybe get a second opinion, get a second legal opinion, but I think that there is more to consider than we can cover tonight with no advance notice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ken Rossen. I too live on the oceanfront, and I'd like to make two points. One, or ask really two questions. One, I understood from the presentation that your ad hoc committee met seven times. I'm aware from some of my friends that are residents here, that they had a chance to give input to the ad hoc committee and speak. And so what I'd like to understand from the ad hoc committee, really what your residents want, the last time I stood here in front of you to talk about this issue, I asked you to please go back and look at the city council meeting where this was first brought up. We filled the room with people that came up and spoke, and said they did not want fractional timeshare ownership in this city. So I'd like to understand, I think the ad hoc committee owes it to your residents to say why you didn't choose to fight this, why you're choosing to try to go down the road of regulating this. I think you owe that to us. You owe it to all these people that came and spoke. Number two, what I see missing up here tonight is you say this is like short-term lodging. You're going to regulate it like short-term lodging, and as Simone knows, when we put the final short-term lodging permit rules in place, it took over a year of back and forth with the city council and staff and residents to get something they could work with. I don't see the details in this here tonight, and it scares me. I see the effect of what's happened with short-term lodging and having fines of $1,000 when my neighbors do not park properly in my alley and I can't get through the alley. $2,000 fines, their permits pulled for six months. I want to hear that you're going to do that same thing to somebody who has property rights. One of the owners parks wrong in this fractional share, gets his ticket, gets two tickets, but the other seven owners can't use the property? The devil is in the details, and we have that problem with short-term lodging, and you have not given us the details. The other thing I'm very concerned with is you say you're going to limit the number of these homes that are going to happen. The residents fought really hard to keep short-term lodging limited to 1,500, 1,500. Are these going to be part of that 1,500, or are you going to make it on top of? And I'll tell you what, you have a, you need to have the number out there. If you put a big number out there, you're going to have the residents really revolt. You know, you put a number out there, 25, 50, you may pass this. They're not going to be happy with you. They're not going to be happy with the city council. But there's no way anybody wants to see another 1,500, 1,500. And if you're aware of what happened with the short-term lodging, the city of Newport Beach has the highest number of vacation rentals of the whole coast of California. Nobody else is even close.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Pore Vidoshi, Senior Public Affairs Manager for Picasso, a real estate and property management company for co-owned homes. I wanted to start by thanking Community Development Department staff and the Planning Commission Subcommittee on Fractional Ownership for their time and commitment to drafting reasonable regulations for co-ownership in Newport Beach. We are grateful for the opportunity to work collaboratively with the city, and hope we can move forward with policies that address both the city's concerns and also continues to allow Picasso to enrich lives by making second homes possible and enjoyable for more people. We took seriously the issues that were raised at previous city council and planning commission meetings, and put together some draft regulations which we hope address those concerns. After spending a year working together, coming up with solutions, I think what's been presented today offers a really balanced solution and reasonable regulations. In regards to a cap, we would propose about a third of what is allowed for STRs, so about 500 citywide. And that's, that's our suggestion for this, Commission. We look forward to continuing to work with the city. And then I just wanted to address a couple of the comments that were made by some of the residents here. You know, Picasso is absolutely not the same as a timeshare. Our owners own and control a single home. In contrast to a timeshare, where purchasers acquire contractual rights to use the commercial property and its various amenities, they typically operate on a point system and allow purchasers to spend time in different resorts in their network. Our owners must use the house that they own. In practice, timeshare purchasers have little to no control. If they are not pleased with the services provided, they can't fire their resort operator. They can decide to fire Picasso as a home manager if they choose. And then the difference is really illustrated in price as well. The average timeshare purchase is about $20,000. In contrast, a Picasso co-owner spent, on average, $600,000 for their equity portion in the home. I also wanted to remind the Commission, you've heard from our owners in the past, they weren't able to be here today, but you could see that they were families, retirees, they had kids that were going to school nearby, they spend a lot of money in the city, they're really invested, they've spent a lot of cash to become a part of this community, and they're not what you would call a weekend warrior. You know, they're coming here really because they love Newport Beach. They've already been spending their time here, maybe in short-term rental, but they decided to take that, those visits, and make them a more permanent investment in the community. I'm happy to answer any questions with regards to the Picasso model, or any of like the draft regulations that we had suggested to the department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gina Cruz. I'm from Newport Island. I don't know what else I can say. I know you wanted comments kept short and not repeated, but I think some of my fellow residents here have spoken far better than I can, so I just want to support everything they've said. However, after the last lady who just spoke in favor of Picasso, I feel like I've just sat through an awful two-hour timeshare cell. I don't know if any of you have ever experienced that, but you feel drained after it, and you feel that things came out of the woodwork that you didn't expect. To hear proposing 500 permits has been discussed freely with all of you, yet it hasn't been put onto any of the presentation tonight. For us, the residents who are invested here, and who support you as our Planning Commission, as our voice with the city, to promote the welfare of citizens, I'm a little bit astounded. So, I won't repeat all the things that people have spoken far more eloquently than I, but I would just add that as a very big, whoa, I need a cocktail or a snack that's usually on offer at a timeshare cell, so if those would be provided next time, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay. See none. We're going to go ahead and bring it back to this Commission, and I want everybody just to quickly understand that what's been requested of us is to make a recommendation based upon what we see here, and that's what our goal is, and that's what we're going to do, to present to staff, because that's what's been asked of us. Fire away.
If you'd like, I can answer a couple of the questions that were raised, and I think we can tag team on it, or if the body would like to
Sure. Yeah, which questions would you like to, would you like to answer?
I mean, I did listen to Ms. Rossen, as well as Mr. Mosher, and just to throw out some ideas, some thoughts with respect to the enforcement and this, that process. I am sensitive to the fact that, you know, this is a little bit different than short-term lodging, that the ownership interest, how would you go about enforcing it? You know, one thought that does come to mind is a suspension of the permit. If we did have X number of violations within X period of time, two within a six-month period, I'm just throwing out ideas, or within a three-month period, and then with that suspension, you know, what the penalty could be is either financial and/or limiting their ability to come to the property for X period of time. So I just wanted to throw that thought idea out to the body for consideration. With respect to the subletting, I do think that if, if the body is amenable to it, I think that with the, the co-owner permit and the acknowledgements that are required, we would require certain very specific information from each co-owner, and, and with that, would be able to, to verify, verify who is on the property. So those are just kind of a couple of thoughts that, that came to mind, and I don't know if Jaime or the other folks want to answer, answer some additional questions. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Jaime, any other questions that you'd want to address or comments that were made? Jim, Jaime?
No.
Okay. I, real quick, before one of you guys could go, I just had a question. I heard a lot of concerns about, you know, police, fire, ambulatory impacts on everything. Do we, do we, has it been documented? Do we know how many times PD has been called to any of these Picasso units?
No, we don't, we don't have any data on complaints.
Do we have a record of a party atmosphere in any of these properties?
So, Chair Elmore, I think from a code enforcement standpoint, we've had one complaint, and the issue was quickly resolved. We didn't have any other follow-up notice of violations. Other than that, we have no complaints from these fractional homes that are already out there.
You know, the residents have, we've had one resident complain, make a phone call, but other than that, with all of these that we have, and how many do we have right now? You said 11?
We have a total of 12.
12? And we've had one, one complaint?
One more.
Okay. So it's not, as, as it, based upon that number, is it, I mean, just amongst us, I, I'm not getting this, I understand that people come in and go in, but I'm not really getting the sense yet, right now, that it's a party atmosphere based upon one complaint. So just kind of want to think through that as we're talking through that. I'll, I'll stop there, but is, any other recommendations, comments? I know Ms. Rosine and
Mark wanted to go first.
Yeah. You guys were on the ad hoc.
Okay. So I would like to start off by making an important distinction here, and that is that the opportunity still exists for you to reach out to your new council, because what we were, what staff was actually designated to do was to find a way to regulate, not find a way to put a moratorium in effect. So this is very difficult, and I still think the opportunity exists to broaden the definition of timeshares, to include fractional ownership underneath it, and that is not the purview of this body. So it needs to be clear that you have an opportunity, should you desire, to reach out to your council people, who can make that ultimate decision. So, in light of the fact that what we're talking about here is a regulatory atmosphere and not just a moratorium, there are a couple of things about this that I would like to comment on. Number one is that, in terms of a discussion for permitting, there was a discussion of having this be a more transparent process by having a public hearing, and this going through the Z A. I don't see that here. I would be in favor of making sure that if this did become a regulatory process, that it does go through a public hearing, such as the Z A, so that there was complete transparency for the neighbors. I would additionally, in terms of the co-owner permit, have that be a part of, or the management permit, of that Z A process. Important distinction from what is, what we're seeing right here. I also don't believe that this belongs in an R1 zone at all. And, you know, everything else, you know, obviously, it needs to meet the guidelines of our city code. So parking and all these other regulatory items that are on here are absolute, and I at least wanted to start off with that particular set of comments, and then, Commissioner, we can go ahead and have further dialogue.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Lowry, do you show a point?
Yeah, just wanted to say, well, first off, thanks to staff for all of this. We did meet a lot of times, and there was a lot of extra help there from staff and everyone, so I wanted to appreciate that, because as Mark was saying, it's a very difficult subject, and, and I've said this a lot of times from being on Planning Commission, you know, this, this is a narrow scope, what we're trying to do here. It's not in our scope, nor should it be, to do moratoriums, or any of that kind of stuff. We don't control purse strings to legal actions and all of that, that the city would have to do. So what we were tasked here to do was to come up with some guidelines for a recommendation, then to be put up to a political body that has those, has that authority to, to do what they see, and, and, and put the city on the direction that they, they, they see. So what we wanted to do here was to at least get some points, some points that seemed like it was going down at least a, an avenue here to, to begin some regulations that I think a lot of people would agree on, and they, they, they seem like they're, that it's the right direction to go to as we, as, as these fractional ownerships, at least there's, what, 12 of them now, come to our city. I, I, you know, and I have said this way back, when we were first starting this, I, there's just, I, I have issues on, on the, the ownership and contract law and everything that's happening, and there are so many different legal challenges throughout the state. I don't think, whatever we do here in the city council, there's going to be changes on, on the legal side, as this kind of works its way down various paths. Carmel's being sued, a number of other cities and jurisdictions. There's the St. Helene case, I think, going on there, in that, that's, I think that's the first one up, we believe, when that, that comes and, comes up, and
Yeah, that, that's correct. That case is still pending. Unfortunately, they moved out the trial date. That was kind of one of the objectives that we thought, is that we would have the outcome of that case resolved, and it looks like that has been pushed out to, to January of 2024.
Oh, wow. So when you see all of these potential issues that are, that are going to come down, the fact we're trying to, okay, where can we start to at least get what we believe was a fair recommendation, not a publication, but a recommendation that we could, we could forward to the city? And so that's what we came up here, and, and again, a recommendation, and this is where the start is, so, and with Simone and Jim, and, I mean, we, we start here, recommendations go to the city council, and then it would probably come back to us again for another, or I guess it's up to the city council, but maybe it might come back us to, again, as more of a, of a full resolution to, to recommend, and there could be more comments there, kind of, that could be an avenue.
Right now, we're proposing that it's not going to be in our land use. It won't be in zoning, it'll be in our, our business license side. And so ideally, it won't come back to you, but I still, we still don't know how the council's going to look at this either.
Yeah. So it could have been, but it, there'll be other avenues, and with a body that has the jurisdiction that I, you know, at least that I believe in, in, in terms of being able to, to, to put teeth or other things into, into these type of code enforcement and codes in what with cities. So that's, I wanted to just let everyone know, that's where we were coming from. Where can we come from, from, from a narrow scape that the Planning Commission is, is supposed to do, and how, and what we could recommend to go to the city council? Mark, I don't know if you agree, but I think we, and that's how we went through the last few months.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that what this is an attempt to do is come up with practical regulation, you know, to provide visibility know, to provide visibility to what's happening in the neighborhoods. And I think from a practical perspective and a regulatory perspective that this does that, but this doesn't mean it's the only option. The option still exists to broaden the definition of timeshare, and that's, your city councils has that ability.
Commissioner Klausmeyer, any thoughts surrounding this? Any additional recommendations?
Sure, yeah, I can, I can share some thoughts on this. To me, this sounds like a timeshare framed differently in the form of fractional ownership. The way that the business model is set up, to me, feels like the commercialization of our residential neighborhoods, where there is a profit that is taken from selling these fractional ownerships. I think they do operate like short-term rentals, and we've capped the number of short-term rentals that we allow in the city. So I agree with what Commissioner Rosine is saying is, I think that there is maybe the opportunity for our city council to look at revising the way that timeshare is defined, to see if that is something that could capture what these fractional homeownerships are. So it would be my preference to make a recommendation to not permit this use and to legally find a way to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Do we, is there feedback yet from, maybe this still Yolanda or team, from other court cases like we talked about? Helena was one that we talked about before, waiting to see how that may be shook out, but it hasn't. Are there any others? And what are cities, you know, what kind of traction are they getting or not? And is, where do you see this going?
Sure. So Carmel by the sea was mentioned. They did very recently modify that their, they expanded and tweaked their definitions of timeshare to capture this, and essentially, it is the equivalent of a ban. I don't believe, that ordinance is probably just now taking effect if, or it may still be within the 30-day window. I'm not aware of any lawsuit just yet on on that case. One thing that they did do that was a little bit, I don't want to say unique, but they did also prohibit the advertising by realtors of of these units. And so that may be an easier mechanism perhaps to regulate and enforce that I don't know every other city is doing. And to be honest, I know that there have been cease and desists. I don't know how much enforcement is going on in all of these jurisdictions because sometimes jurisdictions just may not want to share all of all that information. So that's, but that's what I have right now.
I guess I would want to ask Commissioners Lowry and Rosine about the process, maybe going through with the the homeowners you worked with and the companies. And there were some ideas early on of like, you know, buffer zones or, you know, so it doesn't condense in an area potentially. And I know that we've done those with Silver Living and other cities and things. I thought that could have been an idea. When it comes to the idea of the permits, one for the manager, one, I don't know how you restrict or how you regulate, restrict people coming to their own house that they own a piece of. So I don't know how that makes sense to me or how we'd ever enforce that. I can see punitive or financial. Obviously, that makes sense. Also, maybe restricting into some areas of the city or was that seen as, you know, not possible? And then, did you guys have any sort of a number in mind on a cap that you guys were thinking of or, you know, that the, there's more of a recommendation on that? Was there a hard number or were you following what Picasso gave? What, any thoughts on that? Or can you guys explain the process a little more on those few items?
Was the one of the, the spacing was one of them, 500, was that, is that one of them? Yeah, I mean, it it came up, I just, it, it's hard to, to, I, how that was going to be enforced, so we just, we kind of punted on that one a little bit in terms of then just kind of looking at more of going to a cap method versus, you know, saying that some, you know, so many could be spaced. What was the, and the other question was?
Recommendation account.
The recommendation account, that was, number of different places, there was upwards to no, no cap, then there was 500, there was 100, 2, 250. I mean, where where we're at currently in the market, I mean, you have 12. I mean, I just, you know, with with the changes in in rates over the last six to seven months, definitely it's going, I would, well, I think we've seen it, we'll, we'll slow down that, you know, any type of of train there, but nonetheless, you know, that's what we were looking at in in cap. So we, you know, 500 on down where we're at.
Another question I had was on, or I was thinking about, if we're going to compare the enforcement somewhat to short-term rentals, are there, are there prohibitions a lot more stated than something more simple as this? Or are we just going to say anything that short-term rentals can be cited for would now affect these? Or, I don't know the code, sorry for short-term rental, you know, rental prohibitions specifically? Or would it just be what's listed here essentially as issues? How comparative would they be?
You know, I think, I think there was a, somebody made a point that the devil's in the details. Well, you know, we haven't drafted an ordinance yet, you know, these are just kind of concept ideas. I, I think, you know, this can still be fleshed out. We still want to get input from the city council. I think what we have here is a starting point for what enforcement could look like, and I think this is what we're focusing on. We've, we've looked at our short-term lodging ordinance and tried to kind of pull some of that into this, like the good neighbor policy. So I think some of these are going to be, a lot of this is is coming from the short-term lodging also. So this is what you see here is probably what we're, how we're going to focus on the enforcement side.
So just the general idea would be to enforce it similar to short-term lodging?
Yes.
All right. So I just think to summarize this, I mean, what you're asking from us is recommendations, right?
That's correct.
That's correct. So do we want to kind of just talk through the recommendations that are on the table right now so we do our job in terms of what's been asked of us? Yeah. And Mark, maybe if you restate yours, I thought some of those were pretty thoughtful, but there's been a lot of dialogue since then, so.
So there's still options on the table here, and I'm going to just restate that, that there's still the opportunity to broaden the definition of timeshare. So that is an option for our city council. The second item would be if it went down this regulatory process, that I believe there needs to be some transparency for the neighbors so that they would know that this is taking place. I don't know if it's actually possible, but I know that we discussed it in regard to making sure that there was, if it was a permit, that it would be be permitted through a public ZA process. So it would go through the zoning administrator, it would be publicly noticed. Not only would that be for the property itself, but it would also be for the co-owner permit, and that ends up being a professional management company that's required. And so it would need to be maintained is where that is headed. It means that operationally, that they could not, they being the one-eighth share, that every one of those shares couldn't kick out the management company. There has to be a management company in place, and so that's part of that co-owner permit process. The rest of this, you know, I think, not allowing it in the R1 zone, we talked about that, that's going to be, I'm going to throw that out as what, an additional option, should it go regulatory this way? And the rest is, I'm going to call it practical regulation. It's these items here that, you know, create a good neighbor atmosphere if it's going to be regulated.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Klausmeyer, your recommendation one more time?
Thank you for outlining that. That was very clear and concise. My recommendation would still remain to broaden the definition of timeshare.
All right. So we have two of those. Commissioner Lowry? Any, any additional recommendations outside of everything that you've been through? Okay.
No. We haven't.
Okay. And Commissioner Harris, anything that no one, anybody's not touched on that is near and dear to you?
I don't know if there's any thoughts or feedback on the cap, what a reasonable figure would be or.
Yeah, I think there's no right answer. We're going to get hard and feathered no matter what, whatever you throw out there. Again, this is just a recommendation to to council, so. Yep, yeah, Commissioner Rosine?
Can I make the addition? And Yolanda, thank you for bringing this up, and I apologize, I should have started off by saying thank you to staff because you guys put a lot of work into this and putting up with us, and I really appreciate everything that you did. But Yolanda, you mentioned the suspension of the permit with a certain number of complaints. I would, I would recommend that some kind of language be added in or something to that effect. And then looking into this prohibition of advertisement, I don't know where that heads, but it's certainly something that we should explore.
So as it, as a way that I'm just kind of looking at what we have right now in front of us and with everything else, we have, both of you both think that we, and I think it's reasonable that broadening the definition is something that is pretty clear that we need to, we need to try to figure out, I think, from this. So I don't know, staff, as a recommendation to you, can we, can we make a recommendation to the council that we need to broaden, we need to figure out a way to broaden the definition of short-term of timeshares or short-term?
Fractional, yeah. We, we, that is in our hands. We can absolutely come up with a definition of fractional ownership.
To this body, do we want to discuss permit suspensions? Do we want to make a recommendation to staff on a permit suspension? Should there be a bad boy?
I, I think that something should be placed in there, but I think that we could give that discretion to staff and that they could handle that.
Okay. Well, can we, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Are we able to kind of say, hey, we think you should do either or? These are kind of where we're pushing and that's what we're doing, right? More, a little bit general, okay?
Yeah. Bring it back to this board again, transparency to the neighbors, so permitting through ZA, which was Commissioner Rosine's idea, is that something that you feel?
My question to legal, if we're going down a business, our business operation, business license kind of avenue, how does a ZA fit into that if, because it's not in its purview?
Yeah, and so, I mean, we did, looking at short-term lodging, it is more of a regulatory permit as opposed to, you know, regulating land use.
Right.
We, we don't allow short-term lodging in the R1 zone. So in that regard, that is a little piece there. I, I do think that it's either a regulatory path and/or a land use path. I mean, I think that we can create the transparency with, through a regulatory permit. I'm not sure that it would be through the ZA per se, but I think that we could nonetheless create that transparency if the direction that's provided is to go with a regulatory permit as opposed to land use.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, and I think that's reasonable.
Yeah. I mean, not, not using the ZA, just.
Not using the ZA, but through the permit process.
Does that seem logical?
As long as there's transparency to the neighbors.
So I think there's a consensus among us that trying to figure out a way to find transparency through the permit process is something that is a recommendation from us. The R1 zone, I'm bringing that back to everybody because that's, is that something that you feel is, I mean, it is a little bit different in some ways, it is not in other ways? Not allowing it within R1 zone, and I'm sure we already have them in R1 zone, so I don't even know what you do about that at this point. I mean, it's such a slippery slope as a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, it's a slippery slope on it and and I, I just, I'm honestly at a loss because I used to see a lot of legal issues coming up, not necessarily with us, just what's happening, and I just.
Yeah.
I don't know how you regulate that out, but it's, I, yeah.
So maybe it is not a recommendation from this body as the R1, but it's something that we talked about, and if you can further evaluate that idea, is that something that this board would feel comfortable as an evaluation topic by council? Reasonable cap. Do we want to discuss a cap on these as a recommendation to council?
I mean, that's the, the hard one, and what, you know, is it cap 50, is it 1,000? I'm not saying it's, I'm just saying, you just don't, we don't, don't know. And then what does this, what does this come down to on, on, on the legal side? So, so I, I do think, no matter what you put in there, whether it was the 500 that Picasso wanted, or, or maybe it's 2, 250, 100, I mean, we still have a long window before that cap would get filled up and and hopefully there would be some more clarity, at least on the legal side, as those go down that path over the next year or two, so.
And as I, as I look in the cap that was put on the other short-term lodgings in 1550, that was a cap that was identified by the political body of our city council. And so as planning commissioners, which are land use and oversight, I struggle with making a recommendation on that from us because that's not, my opinion, putting a number on that, it's not our job description. I don't think that's, I don't think that's our job description. So I, I don't think we can make a recommendation on that just because it's, we're not the best body to do that. I think that needs to be the council that that tackles that. Is that, are we in agreement on that? Yeah, okay. Is there, is there anything that I'm missing that?
Yes.
I mean, when we're on, on definition, are we just asking council or council to ask legal in terms of defining that, you know, versus that fractional and it's just basically fractional? What is that going to be? And it's going to be defined as its its own standing term, if you will? It's not, you know, we're, we're not asking it to either define, is it, is it the timeshare or is it not? It's just fractional is going to have its own definition.
I think we're trying to broaden the definition of fractional to see if it incorporates this or not.
Okay.
I think, I think that we could create a definition for fractional ownership.
Anything else that I'm missing? Thank you all very much for your input on this. We do appreciate it. I hope you understand our position on this and, and thank you for this discussion. We'll move on to the next item. Item number seven is the appeal fee discussion. I know we have a presentation, but as I read it in the staff report, it seemed very straightforward to me. Does this, are you guys okay with a discussion without the presentation, planning commissioners? Yep? Yep, okay, good. So staff, thank you. I don't think we need, I don't think we need a presentation on that. Does anybody in the audience wish to talk about the appeal fee discussion? Seeing none. Staff, do you have any comments on the appeal fee?
No, we just would like the commission's input and we'll forward whatever the commission consensus is to the finance committee and the city council.
Great, thank you. And then this commission, do you have any other feedback in addition to what was in the staff report on this topic that you would like to include in this discussion? No? Okay. Thank you guys for your time on that one. Moving on to item number eight.
I'm sorry, if we could just get a vote confirming the.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
I'll make a motion to confirm.
Second. Great, thank you. Staff, item number eight, motion for reconsideration. Anybody? Are there any motions for?
I can vote on the appeal.
Oh, do we need a vote on the appeal, Yolanda?
Yeah. If you have to vote on the, that's not.
On the lodging?
On the, not on the lodging, on the application of pill fees.
Oh, we just did.
Do we, no, that was.
We're good, yeah.
I thought, I thought, never mind.
Yeah, okay. Seeing no motion for reconsiderations. Item number nine, report by the community development director.
Mr. Chair, I'll make this brief. We do have a meeting coming up on March 9th. We do have four items, four important items on the agenda, so that's the conclusion of my report.
Great, great report, very, very well said. Number 10, requests for excuse, requests for excuse absences?
I'd like to request.
I'd like to request to be excused from the March 9th meeting. We have a quorum, but will we have new planning commissioners by then?
Well, we have a quorum of four.
Oh, okay, okay.
We should.
And we should have new planning commissioners. And then just for the record, we have a child due end of March. So I'm asking for a request for excused absence to a date that I'm not quite sure when it is.
Potentially.
And then that's it, meeting adjourned, 8:59. Thank you.